Call to order. With a quorum being achieved of seventy-five voters, we will start this year's annual town meeting, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Thank you all for coming. You'll notice I pulled my masks down. When you speak at a microphone, it's all right to do that. Please just put it back up when you're done. I think if I don't do that, you'll probably have a hard time understanding me. We appreciate all the hard work that went into putting this together. Obviously, these are very challenging times with a whole new set of ways of doing things, and certainly town meeting has been turned upside down this year. I'm sure everyone's heard about all the different ways that towns are doing it. There are many. So far, they're all working, so I hope ours does as well. We have three rooms, so we have this room, the gymnasium, and outside. There are quite a few people outside. It's going to be very important that the people outside don't talk and stay quiet so that you all can hear the meeting as good as possible. As is our tradition, let's first stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to quickly introduce everyone. We've got our selectmen in front of me, Stan Wysocki, Jonathan Keep, and Bob Sikansky. We've got three members of our advisory board. Unfortunately, Brian Boyle wasn't able to be with us tonight, but we have Joe Myerson, Craig Lauer, and Anne Hurd. Thank you very much for being here. Couple of things we're going to do a little differently tonight in the interest of public safety. I know we started a little late, and this is because I think there was so much interest, so many people were still coming. We are going to limit speakers to one minute, one time per article, and our presentations are being limited to one to three minutes. We're going to do our normal I and A, and I'm going to ask everyone that when you vote, raise your trail marker, okay? So let's try this. One time in all three locations, we're going to do an I vote, and the point of this is, I don't want anyone to scream. We don't want to project. We just want to do a nice, raise our trail marker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Ideally, we're going to be able to do voice votes, and in each location independently, I'll declare the voice vote in this room. Ken Troop, our assistant moderator, in the gymnasium, will declare the vote in there. John Carlin, our assistant moderator outdoors, will declare the vote there. If we all declare the same vote, we move on, the article's been voted on. If we determine that we need to do a count, then we'll ask people to hold their trail markers in the air, just like they've done in the past with paper ballots, and we'll count. I'm hoping we don't have to count, because as we all know, that takes time. We are doing a consent agenda tonight, which groups together many articles and votes them all at once. I'll talk more about that when we get to it. That will be our fourth article. We do have microphones in the normal locations. We do not want anyone to touch the microphones, okay? So please stand several feet away and talk normally. You should be fine. If anyone needs a runner, we do have a runner, gentleman in the yellow shirt. John would be more than happy to come over to you if you would like the microphone brought to you. He'll hold it a few feet away from you. I'd prefer that to people getting up. I think it'll just be quicker. Also, if somebody is... This room is actually going to be very quiet compared to normal, I think, so if people want to talk... I'm fine with talking from the seats as long as we can hear you, okay? So if there's any questions, we'll bring the mic over to you. Please don't speak until I recognize you, and all discussion should go through the moderator or the assistant moderator in the other rooms. I think that's all I have. Anything else? Couple of things, you know, just for when we finish. We do want to have a controlled leaving of the building, so we're actually going to let everyone outdoors leave first before we leave, so please just stay in your seat. Then we're going to let the gymnasium leave, and then we'll leave. So we're going to stay a little bit longer in this room. That's just so that we're not all just crowding on top of each other. Also, when you leave, we're going to have some trash bins right at the door. Please just drop your trail marker into the trash bin, and we'll be cleaning those and reusing them. And a final point is that we do have our annual election on next Monday, the twenty-ninth. Please do get out and vote and exercise your right to vote. Okay. That being the case, we're going to move on to Article One. Do I have a motion on Article One? Article One is accept annual reports. This is a straightforward article approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory unanimously. We're looking for a majority vote. So it's been moved and seconded. We're going to vote unless there's any debate. I don't think there would be on annual reports. Thank you. So again, remember, we're going to raise our trail marker. All those in favor of Article One, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes in the auditorium. Ken? Nikki? When we vote, you're going to have to switch and give the sound over to gymnasium and then outdoors. We want gymnasium now for Ken?
Yes, it passes in the gym.
Thank you, Ken. John?
Unanimously outside.
Thank you. Article Two, unpaid bills for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. There are three bills. Again, this is a pretty straightforward bookkeeping transaction. Does require a four-fifths vote, so let's all give it our unanimous consent. Article's been moved, seconded. Any debate? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously in the auditorium. Ken?
Passes unanimously in the gym.
John?
Passes unanimously outside.
Thank you. Article Three is our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one operating budget. Yes? You're absolutely right. I'm challenged. I apologize. Let's go revote both of those. Sorry, Bob. I tried. Article One, we had the ayes. Are there any nays for Article One? We don't usually ask if we abstain. Ken, are there any nays?
No, no nays in the gym.
John?
None outside.
Okay. Article Two, we had the ayes. Are there any nays on Article Two? Ken?
No nays in the gym.
John?
None outside.
Thank you. And thank you for that point of order. You're one hundred percent correct. We're now on to the operating budget. Do I have a motion? Article's been moved and seconded. I believe we have an amendment. Yes, please. Okay, so we have changed the total amount, reducing it by thirteen thousand. Is that correct? There was a motion to amend the amount. Is there a second? All right. So we're simply reducing the amount by thirteen thousand because they did a calculation after this went to print, and that saves us a little bit of money. So is there any debate on that amendment? I wouldn't think so. All right, we're going to vote on the amendment. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. The number changed because it took into account a calculation of the amount of money that needed to be raised for a taxation that was reduced, so I don't know if you want to add anything to that. But it wasn't an error. It was a change in the number in our favor.
Is it there enough before or did some other number change?
Go ahead. Thank you. Is there any other debate? Ken, any debate? On the reduction of the amount?
No doubt, we're fine.
John, any debate on the reduction?
No debate.
Okay. We're now going to vote on the amendment, which lowers the amount, the total amount that we are taxing, we are agreeing to tax ourselves, by thirteen thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay? That passes unanimously in the auditorium. Ken?
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimous.
Okay, so the amendment has been passed. Normally, now, we would have a presentation by the advisory committee, but unfortunately, Brian couldn't be here tonight, and we're going to bypass that presentation. We do have the NRSD school people here to give us a very brief, I think, one or two slide presentation on the school budget. Thank you. Anne Marie?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you could go to the mic.
To present this tonight. Can you hear? Tonight, the Noshoba Regional School District is presenting a budget that was voted by the school committee of fifty-five thousand, fifty-five million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. This is a four-point-one-two percent increase over last year's budget. As you can see, this is the breakdown of our budget, salaries, benefits, and non-salary. Next slide, please. For the town of Bolton, for all of the member towns, the total assessed amount is forty-six million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Approximately ten-point-six million dollars of this budget is funded by state and locally-generated We have debt for the high school of five hundred and eighty-four thousand, fifty-eight. And for the town of Bolton, the portion of this budget that is assessed to the town is an increase of three percent. The total assessment is fifteen million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand and five dollars. That's a four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twelve dollar increase over last year. This year, we have used one million dollars in our excess and deficiency to fund our budget. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions about what she just presented on the school budget? Ken, any questions?
No.
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, they didn't hear the answer.
So the question was that the original number that was provided was the number associated with the FY twenty budget, fifty-five million.
Right.
And the FY twenty-one is fifty-eight. So it wasn't a question, it was just a point of clarification.
Excuse me?
Mike, you want to say that into the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, it was just a point of clarification. The original number that Ms. Moroney provided was the FY twenty budget value of fifty-five million, and I think what was meant was the FY twenty-one budget, which is fifty-eight million. Just a point of clarification, no question, therefore, no answer.
Thank you. Yes, in the back of the auditorium? Okay. All right, so we're going to have to make sure that we bring a mic to whoever anyone wants to speak or come and step up to the mic. Thank you. Ken, any questions in the gymnasium? Just on the school?
Uh, no.
John?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's just the school budget. Now, I'm going to read through the FY two thousand and twenty-one budget by department as I typically do. The one thing I'm going to do differently today is I'm not going to read... This is all in the back of your warrant, so you can follow along. I'm not going to read any amounts that are under fifty thousand, so if I go through a page and somebody wants, has a question on a particular area, raise your hand, and we'll stop. Town administrator, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty-six. Reserve fund, one hundred thousand. Town accountant, ninety-five thousand, two hundred and fourteen. Board of assessors, one hundred and fifty-nine, oh-three-six, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Treasurer, one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven. Tax collector, seventy-one thousand, eight fifty. MIS, sixty thousand, oh-three-seven. Town clerk, one oh-nine, zero-six-two, one hundred and nine thousand. Town conservation commission, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. Planning board, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-six. Town buildings, one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two. Total general government, one million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. Public safety building, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one. Police department, one million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and Fire EMS, five hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. Tree warden, fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirteen. Communications, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven. Total public safety, two million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, oh-two-three. Education, which we just had the presentation on for NRSD, fifteen million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, oh-oh-five. Minuteman Regional Vo-Tec, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. Total education, sixteen million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and Highway, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred. Construction and maintenance, two hundred and nine thousand, one hundred. Snow and sand, one hundred and eighty thousand. Transfer station, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five. Total public works, one million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five. Board of health, fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five. Council on aging, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. Human services, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and twelve. Library, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine. Total culture and recreation, five hundred thousand, one hundred. Debt service, one million, three hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five. Employee benefits, one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and Other insurance, one hundred and sixteen thousand, twenty-two dollars. For a total budget, and I don't have the number written down because it's thirteen thousand less, but in the book, it's twenty-five million, three-four-one, six-four-three, less the thirteen thousand that we already approved. Sorry that I don't have that number handy. Is there any question about any of those departments? Ken, any questions?
None.
John, any questions?
No questions.
All right, then we're going to vote on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one operating budget. Can somebody tell me the right number?
Yes, right here.
Since I'm going to say it. Right here? Oh, right here. Okay. All right, so we're voting on an operating budget. Is that right? The correct number is twenty-five million, one hundred and six thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and one cent. The top number? Twenty-five million, one hundred and nineteen thousand? Okay. All right, the amendment was the amount raised by taxation. It was not on the total budget. All right, so the total budget is, what's printed in the book, twenty-five million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and one cent, and we amended the amount to be raised by taxation. Is that clear, everyone, I hope? Sorry for any confusion. So, we are voting to approve this budget. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay? Passes unanimously in the auditorium. Ken?
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimously outside.
Thank you, everyone. All right. The next article is Article Four, and at this time, we are going to vote on the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a normal practice for towns at town meeting, where you bunch together a group of articles and you vote them all at the same time without debate. The logic is that these are straightforward articles that are likely to pass unanimously and that there isn't any debate. There are fifteen articles, and if anyone in any of our locations does want to debate any of these articles, then as I read through the numbers, I need you to stand up and say "hold," okay? You can do that in any location. Ken and John will be ready for anyone in those locations. I'll take care of the auditorium. I'm not going to stop. I'm going to go through the whole list, and then we will determine which articles are in it. I've got a motion up here, and the reason this is, in order to do this consent agenda, with some of the articles not being in the, you know, straight, regular order, we have to agree to vote them out of order. So the first motion will be to take the following articles out of order to be passed by consent. This is not agreeing to pass them. This is just agreeing to take them out of order, okay? And the articles are four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two. So again, we are just voting to agree to take them out of order. We're then going to go through and see if anybody wants to hold any of these, and we'll take them out. All of these articles were passed unanimously by both the select board and advisory. They've all been vetted over a period of time at town meetings. You can see them all in your warrant, so do I have a motion to take these out of order? Second? Okay. All in favor of putting these articles into the consent agenda, please say aye. Do we have a point of order? We did have a second, yes. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. So the motion is to collect this group into the consent batch and then vote on whether or not we choose to accept them all in the batch. Is that correct?
That's correct. There will be two votes. We have not... We're not voting on whether or not... We're just voting to agree to take them out of order right now.
So this has no impact on the "hold" function you described earlier?
I'm going to do the "hold" immediately following this vote, prior to taking the vote on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
We just discussed it with the town attorney, whether we did it this way or the other way. It's kind of really, six of one, half dozen the other, but that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about that? This is just to agree to take these articles in the order that I've put them out here. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to take the following articles out of order, please say aye. Opposed? Ken?
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimous.
It was unanimous in the auditorium as well. Okay, now I'm going to read the numbers, and if anybody wants to hold anything, please stand up and just hold your card up and say "hold." Ken and John, if you could please keep track in your sections. Article Four is new revolving funds, to see if the town will vote to establish new revolving funds, as printed in the warrant on Article Four. Article Five, spending limits, revolving funds accounts, as printed in the warrant, Article Five. Article Six, transfer to advanced life support program. Transfer from ambulance receipts of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, as printed in the warrant. Article Seven, culvert replacement on Long Hill Road at West Point. See if the town will take affirmative action on Article Seven, to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand, as voted in the 2018 town meeting. So seven and eight were voted in previous town meetings, and we're voting them again. Article Eight, drainage flood control improvement, South Bolton and Spectacle Hill Roads. See if we'll take affirmative action on Article Eight, as printed in the warrant. Sum of two hundred and fifty thousand, as voted in the 2019 town meeting. Article Nine, OPEB trust revision. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Nine, as printed in the warrant, to accept provisions of the Mass General laws establishing an OPEB trust fund. Article Thirteen, failed culvert on Water Quatic Hill Road at Manor. See if the town will take affirmative action on Article Thirteen, to raise and appropriate three hundred and sixty-three thousand for this culvert. Article Fourteen, diesel exhaust particular filter on the public safety building generator. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Fourteen, as printed in the warrant, and appropriate fifty-seven thousand for this. Hold? Can you please raise your... Who's holding that? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I can't see. I apologize, I didn't know you were up there. All right, Article Fourteen has been held. Article Fifteen, turf management mower. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Fifteen, as printed in the warrant, to raise and appropriate thirty-nine thousand, six hundred. Article Sixteen, painting the library. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Sixteen, as printed in the warrant, to raise and appropriate fifty thousand for painting the library. Article Seventeen, DPW garage overhead doors. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Seventeen, as printed in the warrant, to raise and appropriate twenty-eight thousand for garage doors. Article Eighteen, Sawyer School domestic water booster pump and controls. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Eighteen, as printed in the warrant, to raise and appropriate forty thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven for this. Article Nineteen, Sawyer School window repair. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Nineteen, as printed in the warrant, to raise and appropriate fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars for window repair. Article Twenty, Person's Park land easement. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Twenty, as printed in the warrant, to authorize the Select Board to grant a utility easement and access easement for Person's Park. Hold? Can I just see who said that? Thank you. Twenty is a hold. Article Twenty-two, community choice aggregation. To see if the town will take affirmative action on Article Twenty-two, as printed in the warrant, to initiate the process and authorize the Select Board to participate in contracts for this electricity aggregation plan. Okay, a hold on Twenty-two. So in the auditorium, we had holds on Articles Fourteen, Twenty, and Twenty-two. Ken, did you have any holds?
No, no holds in the gym.
Thank you. John, were there any holds outside?
No holds outside.
Okay. So we are now going to strike Fourteen, Twenty, and Twenty-two from the next motion. The next motion is going to be to pass the Consent Agenda, without debate, on the articles that remain in this agenda. Is that clear? And I didn't miss any holds? Thank you. All right. So, this requires the highest vote necessary for any of the articles within the Consent Agenda. And we did have two, Articles Seven and Eight, that were a two-thirds majority, so this vote does require a two-thirds majority. Since we just went through the process of determining if anybody wanted to debate any of these, I would hope that everybody's okay with the ones that we left in here. But let's see. So, the motion is, we would like to move that the town vote to appropriate Articles Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Thirteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, in accordance with the motions published in the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion, second. Motion and second, this is not debatable, okay? So we're just going to vote. All those in favor, please say aye for the Consent Agenda. Opposed? Passes unanimously in the auditorium. Ken?
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimous outside.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. So we have passed all those articles that were in there, except for... Now we're going to go to the next articles in order, that were not included in this, which are Articles Ten, Eleven, and Twelve. These three articles are zoning bylaw changes proposed by the Planning Board. We are going to, they are in order, so we don't have to vote them out of order. We are going to do a Consent Agenda for the three of these articles, to vote them together, if this group sees fit. But first, we're going to let the Planning Board give their reports.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Is it working? Okay, great, thanks. Hi, Danielle Spicer on the Planning Board. Talking about Articles, I'm going to combine them all right now, is that okay? Articles Ten, Eleven, and Twelve? Okay. At a duly noticed Planning Board hearing held on February 12th, 2020, the Planning Board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of Articles Ten, Eleven, and Twelve of the warrant. Article Ten is to add Section 250-21F, bed and breakfast establishments and homes to the zoning bylaw. This article also includes adding bed and breakfast establishments and homes to the Schedule of Permitted Uses, terms defined in Schedule of Minimum Parking. Articles Eleven and Twelve of the warrant are to impose a municipal charge lien on real property for fees in lieu of units pursuant to MGL, Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-eight, and amend Section 250-27 Inclusionary Housing of the zoning bylaw. I did have a presentation, is it okay to... Were there slides that were... Brought up? So, just a very few slides, just to kind of go through this. We had noticed in our bylaws that we didn't really have a definition for bed and breakfast establishment and bed and breakfast home, so we have now established definitions for them. The establishment is basically an owner-occupied dwelling where four to ten rooms are let, whereas the home is basically three and under. Next slide? Next slide, sorry.
Next slide.
Oh, thank you. So, just some of the general requirements. Basically, it's going to be located in residential zone, a special permit will be required, the use is incidental to the primary resident. Breakfast is limited to permanent residents and paying overnight guests, and there's basically one parking space per room rented. Next slide, please. And what some of the benefits really are, is it allows us to have a six percent excise tax on the bed and breakfast establishments. It really provides an opportunity for residents to earn supplemental income if they so wish, and because it's still within the residential house and zoning, the appearance will still fit within the rural characters of Bolton. And we also did check surrounding towns, actually, if you go to the next slide, and, oh, I think we might have lost the last slide, but the surrounding towns, Harvard, Hudson, Berlin, and actually, I think there's a few more, all actually have bed and breakfast establishments allowed within their zoning bylaw. And since we're combining all three articles, I'm going to jump to Articles Eleven and Twelve, which are the fee in lieu of. Just as a clarification, in case it wasn't clear for this, this fee in lieu of has always been part of the inclusionary bylaw. It is not a new fee that we are proposing. All we're doing is we're trying to close a loophole in which a developer could go through the permitting process, and then sell off lots without disclosing the fee, which could be missed by the buyer. So this is just closing that loophole, basically placing a lien on the lots, which would show up as a deficit on the title, and would need to be cleared before someone would close on the lot. That's it? That's it? Any questions?
If there are any questions, we'll take them, but... Yes?
I refer to the very second slide, which describes the establishment, et cetera. There is a difference between the slide and the actual article that's listed, and the difference which is indicated is it says one parking space per room rented. However, the article says one parking space per room, as well as one for each owner. I presume that means that the number of names on the deed for the land is the count of the number of owners, and I also presume that a parking space is an independently accessible parking space from the drive that's involved, as opposed to three or four cars parked on a driveway. This information is not specific in this particular article. The second question that I have is, is there a provision for the review and revisiting of the permitting over time, as most of these particular establishments tend to evolve from one year to the next, in terms of what they provide and/or how they are arranged?
So, to address your first one, the intent is, yes, the parking spaces would be established, specific spaces for people renting the place. They would not be for any of the dwellers or the owners, excuse me, any of the owners that would be there. So as part of the site plan review process, we would be reviewing their parking layout, and how they would be establishing those parking spaces for their establishment.
So if there are multiple owners, there would be multiple parking spaces?
Yes, I would imagine that so, yes.
And the permit review process?
It has to go through the site plan review process, through the Planning Board.
And I'm asking, what happens in year two, year three, year four, when modifications are made to the residence?
Any modifications that changes within the bylaw, they'd have to come in front of us for review, so, I mean, unless there's a change, you know, it would proceed as it's allowed to under the bylaw.
So any review would have to be initiated from outside of the Bolton governance?
I guess I'm not following what review you're referring to.
Thank you very much. She answered the question that there's a special permitting process that they go to through to become an establishment, and that special permit has tremendous number of guidelines that are written into it. If something changes, they would have to go back and get their permit again. So that's how the special permit process works. Are there any other questions?
I wish to reiterate my question, Mr. Moderator.
You're out of order. You had your question, thank you. Who else? Someone down here? David?
I don't understand why the two parts aren't separate votes. I have no parliament at all with three bedrooms, but the four to ten seems to me excessive, that's nothing but a hotel. And to say that it has to be incidental to the ownership part of it, makes no sense with ten units. So, I'll have to vote against the whole thing, although I would be in favor of the three alone.
So there are three articles here. We're going to try to pass them all together. If you do not want to, David, you want to pull one of those out, you have the right to do that, just say, "Hold" on that article. Do you know which one it is that you're...
I do want to put a hold on that.
Which one is it?
Ten.
Ten? Okay. All right, so I'm now going to have a motion, since we know we already have a hold on Ten. Is there any other debate? I'm sorry.
You put a hold on Ten, you can't do Eleven or Twelve. They refer to Ten.
All right, we'll do Ten first, okay? Since we know we're going to do that, let's do Ten first. So, any other debate on Article Ten? We're going to vote Article Ten as a standalone article. Any other debate on Article Ten? Ken, any debate on Article Ten?
No, nothing in the gym.
John?
No debate outside.
Point of order?
I move that Article Ten be separated into two articles, one for the three-bedroom arrangement, or the three-rental arrangement, and one for the Ten.
I really didn't understand what you said.
I move that the motion be separated, Mr. Moderator, into two motions. One, which is the voting on the bed and breakfast as a residence with three rental rooms, and one which talks about a bed and breakfast establishment with as many as Ten.
Okay. Article Ten is an article that contains everything that's in the warrant.
And I'm moving for it to be separated into two.
All right, I'm sorry. We actually, since we are taking Ten individually, we didn't actually make the motion, so let's do that. This is Article Ten, and the motion is to accept Article Ten. Do I have a motion? Moved and seconded, all right. Now, I guess what you're saying is you're proposing an amendment?
Into two.
Can you please identify yourself? I'm sorry, I did not say this early on, but we do like you to identify yourself and where you're from.
My name is Wagisback, I live on Burnham Road, and I've been a parliamentarian at the University of Bentley for about thirty-six years.
Thanks, great to know.
I'd suggest that you refer to town meeting time.
Can someone give him a piece of paper? And you're going to need to put your motion in writing, because I honestly have no idea what you're trying to do here.
I'm asking that you separate Motion Ten into Ten A and Ten B. Ten A is to vote on the three-unit version as stated. Ten B would be to vote on the ten-unit capability that you've described here. That's the simple split that I'm requesting.
I honestly don't know if we can do that. Does anyone... Danielle, do you have any idea what he's proposing?
I understand the intent here. The issue is there's two definitions, one is for the establishment, one is for the homes. But the bylaw was written to incorporate both of them, so I'm a little concerned about how exactly that can be separated at this point, or amended. But I understand the intent, it's more of just, we have two separate definitions, and then the bylaw, excuse me, the article was written for the establishment of both of them. I will say, just as a compliment to that, we did look at multiple towns surrounding us, and that definition is consistent with what is also in those other towns. They have both an establishment and a home, so it is consistent with Harvard, Berlin, Hudson, you know, right around us as well.
So, is there anything in this, I mean, I don't know this bylaw intimately, so is there anything in this bylaw that would be illogical if you were to eliminate one of the definitions? In other words, if by doing this, we are making the bylaw not serve the purpose that you intended it to serve, I don't know if we want it to become a bylaw. And you're probably the best one to tell us what you think about that. Sounds to me that what you are proposing for Article Ten is that we remove the reference to one or the other, and then create a new bylaw that has the other in it, that's a similar bylaw, and we have two votes.
It's not my understanding that you can create a new article at the town meeting.
Not my understanding that we can vote it as an A and B either.
It is appropriate under town meeting time to split articles into two different components, as long as they do not introduce any additional... as long as they do not introduce any additional.
If I can ask a question. It is, yeah.
I'd like to point out that I'm addressing the previous question as a concern.
All right, thank you. All right. Our interpretation on what you're trying to do here is that we can't create two bylaws out of one. We can't do an A and a B. If you wanted to make a motion to change one of these definitions to a no in residential, if that's what you're trying to do, versus a special permit, you could make a motion to that effect.
Either that or I was just going to ask if they wanted to amend the number under the establishment. We have from four to 10 houses, if that was a concern. I mean, if it was four to eight or something.
Well, it seems to me that you're trying to exclude something, so get a vote, so that you can get a no vote on it. So, so if what you want to do is say no to an establishment versus a home, then that would be the appropriate amendment for what you're trying to accomplish. I can't create an A and B out of a bylaw.
Mr. Moderator, I appreciate your challenge. The reason I wish to split them is because there has been already indications that there is much interest in passing the home conversion, home component, but not necessarily in the multi, multi-residential. And so by grouping them together, you put the entire article in some jeopardy, since it was grouped in the whole structure.
Okay. Well, what would you like to do?
I'm also confused why we have to define that if in fact there are other bylaws in the adjacent towns who apparently have already defined it. And so if it's identical, I don't understand why we have to define it. It either exists or doesn't.
We have to, sorry, Mr. Moderator, we have to define it because it's not in our bylaws.
In our bylaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Are you going to, are you proposing any amendments?
No, Mr. Moderator, because I don't want to, I don't want to put a poison pill in the discussion for the entire bill.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're going to vote on Article 10 has been moved and seconded. We have not changed it. We are now going to vote on Article 10. All those in favor of Article 10, please say aye. Opposed? Please say nay. Thank you. That passes by two-thirds in the auditorium. Ken?
Two-thirds in the gym.
John?
We have two-thirds outside.
Thank you. All right. We're going to just go ahead and vote 10 and 11 individually at this point. I mean, 11 and 12. Thank you. So let's move Article 11, fees in lieu of units pursuant to the inclusionary housing section of the zoning bylaw. Moved and seconded. Is there any debate on Article 11? Ken? Any debate?
Uh, no, no.
John?
No debate outside on 11.
Okay. This is, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 11? Says majority. Aye. Sorry about that. I'm reading it in the warrant. All those opposed? Passes unanimously in the auditorium. Ken?
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimous outside.
Thank you. Article 12, amendment to the Code of Bolton. Can we move the article? Article's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on Article 12? Ken?
Nothing in the gym.
John?
No debate.
All those in favor of Article 12? This is a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article 12, please say aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously in the auditorium.
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimously outside.
Thank you. All right. Our next article is Article 14, which was pulled out. We'd already passed 13. So we're now on the diesel exhaust particulate filter on the public safety building generator. Can we move the article? Article's been moved and seconded. Is there debate? Coming down.
Connie Benjamin, Powder Hill Road. I wanted to ask our director of DPW a question, if I could, concerning this article.
Okay, what's the question?
I was wondering how he established $57,000 sum for this. And question two, it seems that the generator is close to the vents. Wouldn't it be cheaper just to move the generator?
Okay. Don? Don Lo?
Is Mr. Lynch not here?
Okay. No, Mr. Lynch is not present this evening. The $57,000 was given to us as a, as an estimate by an engineer, $6,000 to conduct the feasibility to make sure that we've come up with the right process, that we believe will be the right process, and $51,000 to do the work. And no, it would not be cheaper to move the generator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the Article 14? Ken?
None.
John?
No questions.
Okay. We're going to vote Article 14. All those in favor of Article 14, please say aye. All those opposed? That passes in the auditorium. Ken?
Are unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimous outside.
Thank you. Okay. Article 20, which was also pulled. This is the Person's Park Land Easement. This is, requires a two-thirds majority. Can we move the article? It's been moved and seconded. Debate? Martha? Do you, do you want to go to the microphone?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out that this article won't let the selectmen automatically decide this. It's simply to give them a legal reason to be able to discuss it between the state and the Boy Scouts.
Is that a question, or are you pointing that out?
No, I was just pointing out, I spoke to someone. It just, there would still be meetings about this, and it would still be discussed. It's not just an automatic thing that lets the Board of Selectmen automatically give this easement. It's a legal catch.
Don Lo, please.
This gives the selectmen the authority to negotiate an easement, and they would still need to vote it at a selectmen's meeting.
Okay. So we've clarified that, that we would need to have a vote at a meeting. Thank you, Martha. Is there any other debate on the Person's Park, Article 20? Ken?
No, none in the gym.
John?
We have one comment out here.
Okay.
Hi, Julie Ozide in Anniemore Road. I couldn't hear the last comment, but is it, so this is just about the discussion? This isn't about the actual work and what that's going, going to entail? Like, how much destruction of the park would be done in order to put up a line, you know, in the ground or above, whatever?
Okay, let me, let me please try to paraphrase what you said and correct me if I'm wrong. You're asking if voting this article would allow any destruction of the park prior to some other thing happening, which would be a selectmen's meeting agreeing to an easement, where there would be a discussion? I think that's what I heard your question. So it's not that this would just happen indiscriminately, but, Don Lo?
I still don't understand the question. I don't know who asked it, and I couldn't hear it.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Yeah, the question is, is this?
Where's the speaker, Doug? I want to look at the, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead.
What is the, is there a proposed easement already? And if so, what does it entail?
No, there is no proposed easement yet. The selectmen, I have spoken with the Boy Scouts. They would like an easement. This article is to authorize the selectmen to negotiate one, and then it would be brought to a selectmen's meeting. But, so there is no definite, there is no defined proposal yet at this point, other than the Boy Scouts would like to obtain an easement.
And will we, will the town get a chance to weigh in again, or will this be up to the selectmen and the Boy Scouts then?
This would not come back for a town meeting vote.
So just to be clear, this town meeting vote is giving the selectmen the authority to do this. There would have to be, there would certainly be posted selectmen meetings that where people could attend and voice their input before any votes were taken, but it will not require another town meeting vote. Are there any other questions about Person's Park? One more over here, please. Coming behind you with a mic.
The explanation of the article says that the easement has already been shown on a sketch plan dated February 7, 2019, and filed with the Office of the Town Clerk entitled "Easement Sketch Plan Bolton." So there is a plan. Does it go right through the house that's already there?
There is a plan, there is a proposed plan, but that doesn't mean that would be the plan that would still need to be negotiated. What they're, what they're looking for is an easement to be able to run pipe from a sewer treatment plant to restrooms that they would build. But that doesn't, just the plan we have on file would not necessarily be the final plan. That's their proposed plan. And the selectmen would still need to vote on the final plan, whatever that looks like, whether it be their proposed plan or a modified one.
But there is a sketch on file at the Town Clerk's office, and someone could see it if they were concerned?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So what was just said is that there is a sketch of a proposed plan on file if someone wanted to look at it at the Town Clerk's office, but it is not by any means a final plan or an approved plan at this point in time. Is that fair? Thank you. Any other questions on Article 20?
undefined or proposed or what? Because according to this, it says said, it says easement being shown on the sketch plan. It said said easement being shown on the, on the sketch plan. If I read this correctly, it says that is the plan. That's the language in the article. It says said easement being shown on a sketch plan.
So your question is, is the sketch the final plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It would not necessarily be the final plan. It is the Boy Scouts' request. The selectmen may want to modify it. So what we have on file is what the Boy Scouts are looking for, which may or may not be what the final plan looks like.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry, you've had your one time on this article.
I beg your pardon. I have, I have a motion.
You want to make a motion?
I wish to move an amendment to this article.
Okay, you want to propose an amendment?
I'd like the word said to be changed to as indicated or as proposed.
I'm going to rule that out of order. I think that's frivolous. Any other questions? All right, we're going to vote on this article. All those in favor of Article 20, please say aye. Opposed? Passes by two-thirds in the auditorium. Ken?
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Two-thirds outside.
Thank you. Article passes. Article 21, school feasibility study. Can we move the article? Moved and seconded. I believe we have, Mike, do we have a slide? Mike Horace from the School Committee has a slide here. Presentation.
It's the one with the big circle on it. A bigger circle than that. Keep going. No. No, nope. Sorry, I didn't know that there were multiple slides with multiple circles. There it is. Hey, we got it. Mike Horace, also of Burnham Road, here on behalf of Neshoba Regional School District. Article 21 authorizes or requests authorization to borrow an amount not to exceed $1.5 million for a feasibility study. The feasibility study is just one step in a series of steps that will ultimately lead to either a rebuild or a reconstruction of the high school. This is a process that typically takes anywhere from five to seven years, potentially a little bit longer. Really, the first step was the submittal and the acceptance of the statement of interest, which happened in December of 2019. I don't want to go into detail about all of the issues that our high school faces. I think if you've got your fingers on the pulse of the district, you probably already know that. So given my limited time, I'd just like to address a couple things on the feasible study, feasibility study. The first is that the language of the article states that the district is seeking to borrow amount not to exceed $1.5 million. And just to be clear, that is going to be divided relatively equally amongst all three towns, Bolton, Stowe, and Lancaster. And so the actual not to exceed amount for Bolton would be $500,000, or $500,000. And given that we are currently engaged with the Massachusetts School Board Authority, School Buildings Authority, rather, a majority of this money, or a good chunk of this money is reimbursable. So the actual amount and the actual burden to Bolton is considerably less, will be considerably less in the long run of $500,000. Also, there is an error, an unfortunate error at the very bottom of the summary that says not to exceed $2 million. That's an error. The value was revised not to exceed $1.5 million. So on behalf of the School Committee, I'll apologize for that. The other point that I will make is that acceptance into the MSBA program comes with a timeline, starting on August 1 and lasting through April 1 of 2021, and that is our invitation window. We are eligible to accept and able to demonstrate our ability to authorize those funds. If we can't authorize those funds, then we start back from square one, and we are set back one or two years. And truly, there's no way to guarantee that we'll be accepted into the program again. I did hear from my colleagues in Lancaster, they also had a town meeting tonight. They, they approved, so we would need authorization from Bolton and from Stowe in order to move forward. So I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Do we have any questions on the school district feasibility study, which was clarified? The wording does say $1,500,000, but in the summary it said $2 million. So it is $1,500,000, to clarify. Any discussion in the auditorium? Ken?
None in the gym.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on, Ken.
Hi, Connie Benjamin, Powder Hill Road. I'm just reading in the summary, it is anticipated that the towns will ultimately be eligible for reimbursement for partial cost of the feasibility study and the design and construction. That doesn't sound like a given to me. Sounds like you anticipate it, but it doesn't mean that we will be getting any.
Right, correct. So good question, Connie. I think the answer to your question is that in order to be, in order to be qualified for reimbursement, we have to move forward. So we have to accept the feasibility study. That study has to go through, and we have to approve of the eventual rebuild or reconstruction. And at that point, we'll be eligible for the grant. And at that point, we'll be eligible for the grant money.
Be eligible, but that, does it mean we'll still get it, it's still based on it by need, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Is it based on need, town, the?
It is based on need. Yeah, so our, our acceptance or invitation to the program is based on need. We are one of 11 districts in the Commonwealth that was invited to this, to this point.
Yeah, they always look at us as a very rich district, so sometimes I wonder about the need part.
Needs-based only. Yep, there's no entitlement here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions in the auditorium? Ken, are there any questions in the gymnasium?
None here.
John?
We do have a question, but before we do, there's a blue Subaru 271 AV7 with their lights on.
Can, can you say that again, John? The license plate?
It's 271 AV7, blue Subaru.
Blue Subaru with your lights on. Okay, go ahead with the question.
Perfect. It's David Bossley, 87 Laurel Road. I'm a little bit concerned that once again, the town is going down a kind of slippery slope. And that if we start voting this type of an article now, I can already hear in the future, an argument being made, well, we've already expended $500,000 or $500,005, why are we wasting that money? You know, I find it very commendable that special interest people here in town advocate hard for their interests, be it the school, be it conservation, open space, any number of causes. I've yet to hear an advocacy group, though, that advocates for fiscal responsibility and tax moderation. And I'd love to start seeing that, in particular, as we think about embarking on something as large as this, potentially as large as this. In particular, what we have to consider is that it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. As we continue to exert more pressure on our citizens through taxation, a lot of the larger landowners are going to continue to sell their property, creating more and more residents, more and more housing, more and more demand on our services and our education. So I would ask the town to really think carefully about approving this type of an article, because it does become a self-fulfilling prophecy. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there any other discussion?
Can I respond to that, Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm going to let Mike answer that. Go ahead, Mike.
So, thanks for your question, Dave. I actually would assert to you that the need for new high school is essentially an inevitability. If we do not pay, if we do not begin this process of allowing the state to reimburse us on this expenditure, then what we'll be doing is essentially allowing the high school to decay even further and spending in the, on the order of millions of dollars to repair for a new roof, a new HVAC system, mechanical systems, single-pane windows that are draining energy. So we can either dump money into, you know, an aged building that has exceeded its useful life, or we can invest in a new building, something that I personally think is best for our, our town, our district, and our kids.
Thanks, Mike. Is there any other debate outdoors, John?
No other comment.
Okay, so we are now going to vote on Article 21, School District Feasibility Study. It's been moved and seconded. It's a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Passes by majority.
Unanimous in the gym?
John?
Majority.
Thank you. The article passes. Okay, our next article is Article 22, Community Choice Aggregation. Can we move the article? Moved and seconded. This article requires a majority vote. And do we have a one-page presentation? Sharon? This one over here. Thank you.
You'll be surprised that I can actually do this in a minute.
Can you please speak into the mic?
Sharon Chappella? I said you'll be surprised, though, should know me, that I've got this to a minute. National Grid does not produce the electricity that it brings to us. This investor-owned company purchases its electricity from suppliers and includes in its mix only the state-required percentage of electricity from renewable resources. It must renegotiate its contracts every six months, and so our rates vary on that schedule. About 70% of Bolton residents take what National Grid gives us. Community Choice Aggregation allows the town to choose a single broker who will find competitive suppliers who can offer us longer contracts for a more stable price, and ones that can offer a significantly greater percentage of electricity supplied by renewable sources. The Board of Selectmen with input from the town will choose one or more of these suppliers. Everyone who now gets their electricity through National Grid will be switched to this new supplier, but can opt out with a single phone call whenever they wish. It's a win-win program.
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on Article 22, Community Choice Aggregation? Yes?
Sharon? Are there any implications?
Can you please introduce yourself each time? Thank you.
Wagonsback, Burnham Road. Sharon, is, is there any implication and/or effect on home solar energy producers?
No, none whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other debate in the auditorium? Seeing none. Ken?
None.
John?
We have a commenter.
Hi, Dan Danlin from Soy Road. I just had a question about how this might affect arrangements if people have solar panels and are selling electricity back to the grid. How would decisions made by the town affect those arrangements?
As far as you understand, it would not affect that at all.
So currently, National Grid has a, we're able to do net metering. Anyone who has solar, they're able to, to sell that back to the grid. So the question was, would that be affected by going with this aggregation? And you said, as far as you know, you do not believe so.
As far as we know, we don't. I'm not exactly certain what would happen in terms of how much National Grid pays us. They pay us less for the electricity that we provide to them than we pay them when we're buying electricity from them. Even though, when we put our electricity into the grid, we essentially allow that to be simply supplied to our neighbors at no cost to National Grid.
So I would just comment that there are quite a few households in Bolton that have solar power. So in the event that we did this, that would certainly be a factor that the selectmen would want to look at in reviewing that. Yes, Joe?
Is this a microphone? Can you hear me?
No.
Is this a microphone?
It's not on.
Why don't you stand up, Joe? And, yeah, if you could just back off. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, because this was a question I asked when we had a joint advisory committee, selectman, meeting about the warrant. If you sell your electricity back to National Grid, you're actually getting a credit on your bill. The cash payments that you get come from the sale of SREC certificates of carbon offset. And that really is not from National Grid. It's from an exchange. So that most, most of your earnings, if you have earnings from your electricity generated, doesn't come from National Grid anyway, so I don't think this would be affected.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any other questions outdoors, John?
One more?
Hi, this is Jasmine Dupre from Vaughan Hill Road. I was wondering how exactly someone would opt out of the program if we already had electricity suppliers that we use? Would that be something that we would have to do through the town, or is that something we do with National Grid?
It's, it's actually a pretty simple process. You place one phone call to Town Hall. They will give you the phone number for the broker, and, and you make that single phone call. It's, it's a very simple process.
Thank you. Any other questions, John?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we are voting on Article 22, Community Choice Aggregation. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to look into this. It's a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous in the auditorium?
Unanimous in the gym?
John?
Unanimous outside.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Article 23, The Taggart Property. Can we move the article? The article's been moved and seconded. We have a presentation from Conservation, and this is an article that does require two-thirds majority. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Berrby. I've been volunteering with the town here for about seven or eight years and currently chair the Conservation Commission. As we all know what's going on with coronavirus and the need to move fast, and I do want to apologize for two things. One, my quarantine beard, it's a little out of control. And, and two, we're really going to move fast with this. I know there's some types of subjects and topics that people wanted to get into, but we're going to have to move quick, and I apologize for talking fast and just kind of rolling along. On this first slide, let's go ahead and meet the, the Taggart acquisition property. If you can see, this is about where the high school is, DPW, and then as you go down Furbush Mill, Furbush Mill Road. This is the Taggart property right here. It's approximately 46 acres, 43 to 46 acres. This property right here, this is state-owned land. This along here, all town-owned land. This is new conservation land that was added as part of this housing development, and this is the existing Wilder Pond land. There was a video that went around. Hopefully, people had a chance to watch that ahead of time. This parcel has a number of, sorry, different sections within it. There are upland resources currently. Those upland sections contain a vernal pool, a kettle pond. There are carp paths, the existing Lancaster Hudson Railroad, and some unique vegetation. And then generally speaking, along the borders, the edges, the periphery, is more of the wetlands. There's a perennial stream, cold water fish, rec- rec- parian area, and the associated bordering vegetated wetlands that we think we would, we would find with those. It also presents a unique opportunity. The reason, one of the reasons we showed all these different parcels is one of the things we look for is connectivity of conservation land. This gives us an opportunity to connect approximately 114 acres of open space and conservation land, which is exactly what we look for, especially with wildlife, maintaining wildlife, biodiversity, and health. It is one of the bigger things that we tend to look for. If I can get the next slide, slide two. So of course, the benefits to the community. First of all, passive recreation and hiking. We've noticed during the pandemic a significant increase and uptick in the use of our conservation lands. It's a perfect opportunity to get out, get fresh air, get away from the kids, just collect your thoughts, get exercise for you and the family. And what we've noticed is a lot of our parking areas are at capacity or overloaded. This would provide us with an extra spot, again, where people could get out in times like this, in times like this, and also to find solace. Secondly, one of the benefits to this, it is, it has to do with climate change and resiliency. Among other things, this helps us with stormwater management. If you hadn't noticed, the three culvert replacements on the warrant, the cheapest one was $250,000. I believe that's a little bit less than what's now happening on Furbush Mill Road, the proposed culvert repairs there. This should help us with stormwater management and actually save us money over time, hopefully. Those conditions of drought and extreme flooding are not getting better. Those are going to get worse over time. It is going to cost us more money. This is an investment that will help us to hopefully save that money in the future going forward, to a certain extent. It also provides carbon sinks, some natural cooling, and again, a nice corridor for wild, wildlife and our biodiversity. And third, it also allows us to, to land bank, land for inevitable municipal build-out. It's hard to sometimes avoid little pockets, random pockets wedged in areas for municipal build-out. This would actually provide some foresight and planning into where and how we want to expand out the town when we inevitably need to. Along those lines, I will say, and I should say, opportunities like this Taggart property, sadly, they generally come up in bad times, in tough economic times, far more often than they come up in good times. When they come up in good times, they're extremely expensive. Towns with foresight and planning, this is the time that we need to move on certain things like this. Sometimes, this land will never be cheaper. We will never be able to purchase land in this location, in this area, with these resources at a cheaper price. And I'll have more on that later, and I know people will have questions on that.
Brian, if you could, um,
Yep.
wrap it up.
I am trying to, trying to. Could we go to the next slide? Sorry, this is the cost, everybody's least favorite. We can explain that. I'm sure there'll be questions on that. There are grant opportunities that can knock that price down by almost the $500,000. As was said before, these are never guaranteed, but we do have really good chances with a number of these grants. Next slide. Just in closing quickly, and again, I appreciate the extra time. Kind of went around the community, tried to talk to a lot of people about this before we got here, so we could kind of have an understanding. There are three myths that kept coming up, and I just want to get through those real quick. I promise I'll move fast. The first myth, people tend to think that the Conservation Commission moves on and tries to purchase every piece of land that comes up. We get excited, something comes up, we jump at the opportunity. This is simply not true. We have an openly, open space and recreation plan that's kind of our governing bible. It seeks out what our priorities are, what we're supposed to look for. It was put together by the community and voted on the, by the community. In my seven years in the Conservation Commission, we have passed on far more parcels we have taken no action on than we have ever suggested that we take any action on. Yep. Secondly, the second myth, the myth of unbuildable land. I'm sorry, a lot of people in town have been told this, this is unbuildable land. You can't build on a lot of this. Unbuildable land is not a thing. Unbuildable land is a function of the current administration, and those are in power to offer waivers and exemptions. There is no such thing as unbuildable land. You can definitely build on this land. You just got to get the right waiver. And, and third, the final myth, and I'm sorry, we will not discuss this tonight, but is climate change. You have a right, and I strongly support it. If you do not believe in climate change, that is fine. If you do believe in climate change, and you do feel that it's a problem, this is an active step we can take in combating climate change.
Thank you.
This is not a we believe, this is not a we resolve. This is an active measure that we can take that is proven to actually have results.
The article, no, thank you. The article's not about climate change. It's about buying a piece of land. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Climate change plays,
Selectmen?
If you didn't hear what I said, it plays into it.
I, I, I asked you to stop, and I would ask you to respect me. Thank you. Stan, go ahead. Stan Wysocki, our selectman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stan Wysocki, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I was the lone selectman that voted not to recommend this article. And also, Brian Boyle, Chairman of the Advisory Committee, also voted not to recommend this article. It's a very nice piece of property. And for all the reasons that, that were, were just stated, it's probably, it would be a great idea to do. However, you know, despite the fact that it's in Concom's plans, this piece of property was brought to our attention to be put on the warrant pretty late in the game. The property has been for sale for some time, and it was only in the middle of the budget planning and warrant sifting that this came to our attention. And unfortunately, there really wasn't any public debate. There were no public hearings being held on this particular piece of property to discuss the merits. The Board of Selectmen only met once and briefly with one member of Concom during the, the budgeting and warrant building cycle. So there has been very little discussion about the property, other than, you know, some of the discussion we've heard tonight. My concern is, is that there hasn't been very little public conversation and, and discourse on this property late in the game, and also, I believe it was either the meeting the night that we closed the warrant, or the one just previous. One of the selectmen brought up the fact that, why don't we carve out a piece of the Taggart property and hold it in reserve for future and hold it in reserve for future municipal building? That's all well and good, but we don't really know what piece of the property that is. We don't even know if that piece of property, whatever it is, would be even buildable. I've also heard secondhand, and I will say secondhand, that the terrain is rather steep, and we have no idea what the cost would be to build a road to get to that piece of property to put that municipal building on. I would say, you know, all of those factors, the fact that we really haven't had a good and deep discussion about this piece of property. I would ask, at the very least, that we pass over this article this evening to give Conservation Commission time to have that public discussion, to have that review, to have the questions, the few questions that I've raised, you know, gone through and answered adequately and thoroughly before we actually vote on whether or not we want to buy this piece of property. As I said, the piece of property has been for sale for quite some time. I don't believe we have even begun to feel the effects of what has been transpiring over the last few months with COVID-19. I think there are going to be significant economic repercussions for some time to come. We were able to beat down the school budget this year. That will not be the case next year. We have no idea what shape the state's going to be in. We have no idea what our shape is going to be in as a town next year. I don't know how many people have lost their jobs. I don't know what the economic conditions in this town are going to be. I can pretty much say that new revenue is going to slow down. I think new growth in construction is going to slow down. And I don't think a developer is going to come in and scoop up this property between now and the time we're able to have further discourse. So I would ask, you know, the voters of the town, at the very least. I think it's probably something worth debating, but I think we haven't had enough debate on it. And I would ask the townsfolk to pass on this article for the time being, and then schedule a time for having that set of discussions, whether it be at a special town meeting later this year or at an annual town meeting next year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stan. Is there other debate on this article? Bob? No. Is there other debate?
Could I?
Bob? We do not have a motion before us at this time. Bob Romer?
We've heard seven minutes of the minority position on the Board of Selectmen. Could we hear something more from the majority position on the Board of Selectmen, please?
May I go first?
Yes, please.
Thank you. There have been many proposals to buy land in the town. I think in the past few years, very few of them have come out of the Conservation Commission. For those not in the auditorium, this is Bob Sikansky speaking. Very few of them have come out of the Conservation Commission. This piece of land was first identified back in, I think it was 2005 or 2006, by the Conservation Commission as a desirable piece of property. They've, I believe they've done their homework. I do agree, because of the COVID-19 situation, there hasn't been a lot of public discussion about this. But my conversations with the Conservation Commission say that they've done their homework on this. We stand a good chance, no guarantees, but we stand a good chance of getting substantial reimbursement for it in the form of grants. It's a very desirable piece of property. It connects to several conservation pieces of land already, and I think the price makes it very, very attractive for 43 acres. So that would be a summary of my reasons to recommend purchase of this property.
Thanks, Bob. Is there other debate? John?
Jonathan Keep, Board of Selectmen. One of the, part of the due diligence of the Conservation Commission was to get an estimate done on their, you know, they had it commissioned, not accepting the seller's estimate. And the seller, she lives, I believe, in the West Coast, you know, has very fond feelings about Bolton. And she has agreed to sell this property for half of our appraisal, that value. This isn't going to happen very often, that somebody sells 43 acres for half of the value. I don't know if that's happened in my time here, ever. So that, you know, that, the quality of the land combined with the willingness of the seller to cut the price in half is, you know, a compelling incentive for me to support this.
Thanks, Jonathan. Anyone else in the auditorium? Yes, in the back.
Hi, Gentry Farrell, Wataquatic Hill Road. I just had a question for Selectman Wysocki, and that was just, have you recently or ever supported the purchase of land to put into conservation?
Yes, I have supported purchases in the past.
Okay, this is not a personal-- place for, it's not a place for personal form. If you have a question about the article, you can.
Okay, thanks.
But whether or not, that's not where we're going. Thank you. Can we see if we have some other questions from the other rooms, and then you can answer them, Brian? Okay? One more here. Can we get the mic over here, please?
Betsy Taylor Kennedy, Wataquatic Hill Road. I just wanted to say that, yes, not only did the Conservation Commission have this piece of land in their sights in 2006, but the previous master plan also earmarked this as one of the special places to preserve. And also, I just wanted to make a comment to one of the previous speakers that, because this, I think developers would be really interested in coming to buy this because the property price is so low. So I think this is a rare occasion.
Thanks, Betsy. Ken, do you have any debate in the gymnasium on this article?
Yes, we have a comment.
Hi, Robert Leslie, Farm Road. Quick question, I couldn't tell if someone said that the property's been available for some time. What is that sometime? Do you know exactly how long it's been on the market?
Okay, the question is, how long has this been for sale? I don't know if anyone knows that. We have one answer of at least a year. Ken, other questions?
No.
John?
I have several people waiting for comment, but just as a point of order, could all the folks inside, when they're going to speak on the mic, get good and close? We really can't hear pretty much anything other than you outside, Doug.
Okay, sorry about that. We'll try to make sure people speak into the mic. Go ahead.
Rhonda Balco, Green Road. This piece of property has been on the town's mind for many, many years. And the fact that this woman is willing to give it to us at a reasonable price, I think we should vote for it. Over the years, there have been other parcels that have been offered to us at a reduced price. Example, here at the high school, 18 acres were going to be donated to us, and the town said no. And I think we need to be proactive instead of reactive for a change.
Thank you. John, do you have someone else?
Yeah, Kia, Boynton Ocean by Main Street. I got a postcard in the mail that said 4.5 acres of the parcel, which is about 10%, would be held for municipal land banking. And I'm wondering, how was that number arrived at, and is it fixed? Because I, although I totally support buying this land, I would like to see a lot more of it be open to municipal use. I mean, it could be, it could be a septic field, a water supply, if we ever got to the point when we needed that. It could be a community center building. It could be more soccer fields. There's a lot of different uses it could be. And it's a very large parcel. You can conserve quite a lot of it and keep the integrity of its beauty and keep, by the way, Napoleon's, Napoleon's Tadmore is visible from the railroad track. And I also strongly believe this is a very low price for a high-quality land, very low. And I think this woman has been holding out to give it to the town at a reduced cost. There was a plan for 15 houses drawn up only two years ago. And unlike a previous person's point, this pandemic is going to make this town very, very popular. So it's going to be sold if we don't buy it.
Okay, you asked a question, if the four and a half acres land bank was a fixed number, and where did that come from, I believe?
Right, and is it debatable? Could we have more? Is there going to be a process that the town can debate how much of it we want?
Okay, thank you. John, do you have another question?
Yes, we do.
John Robbins, Wilder Road. Am I too close? Just a couple of comments. One, this is a pristine piece of property with water, with a little brook. It is teeming with wildlife. It has multiple trails through the property and would be a great asset to this community for all of its citizens. The comment that, since it hasn't sold up to this point, that it's not likely to sell in the future is nonsense. Anyone who walks the property can see that there is construction encroaching on it right now. There was a new set of condominiums that abut the property right now. So I don't accept that. The point about the not being roads is simply not true. There are two clearings for roads on the property. So that's not true. And the last point I'd like to make is that the amount of expenditure from the town is not clear because there is potential grant money available. Sudbury Valley Trustees has expressed an interest. And there are, to my understanding, multiple ways of raising additional funds. So I would strongly urge everyone to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have another speaker?
Yes, I do.
And again, it's the Scrooge, David Bossely, from 87 Laurel. I do really appreciate Selectman Stan Wysocki's considered comments. In light of what we are going through as a nation, as a state, and here on the local level, this is the one taxation area under our control. The federal government is into this pandemic for trillions of dollars. The state is into it for billions of dollars. Who's going to pay for all of that? We are. We as the citizens of Bolton, amongst others. I would submit to you that although you may think this is a decent price, historically, the town of Bolton has bought a lot of conservation property, and the thumbnail that we used was about $5,000 per acre. So this is substantially higher than $5,000 per acre. You know, there has been some fear mongering out there amongst others about this property as well. And I'd submit to you, for instance, the great success story of Camp Virginia. Again, a lot of fear mongering about that property. And we now have a small business on site, some great new neighbors that I think we should all appreciate. The last item that I would like to submit is that it doesn't sound like this has been fully considered and fully vetted. I hear that it could be. It's got possibly wetlands, it's got some vernal pools. It may have challenges developing. We may be able to get grants. I would submit that until we have this more nailed down, we shouldn't speculate on something. Therefore, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask for a motion to table this until a future town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, a motion has been made to table this until a future town meeting, and that motion was seconded. We are now going to debate that motion. Table. I'm not familiar with tables, so I'm looking. Lay on the table. It is not debatable. You are correct. So we're going to vote that. It has been moved and seconded. It's a vote. Right, this is a two-thirds vote. So we are, it is without debate. Thank you for that clarification. So we are going to vote on just the motion to lay on the table this article, which means we're not going to vote further on it if we vote yes to table it. Okay? So an aye means that you are agreeing to table the motion, which is stop the debate at this point in time. A nay means you want to continue to discuss the motion before us and vote on the land purchase. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay? That does not get a two-thirds in the auditorium.
Not two-thirds in the gym either.
Not a two-thirds outside.
Okay, Ken, you said not a two-thirds?
Correct.
Okay, we did not get two-thirds in all three rooms, so we don't have two-thirds. All right, so that motion is over. We are now still debating the Article 23 for the property. John, do you have anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? We are going to let, we are going to let Brian have a final wrap-up and answer any questions he might have heard, but I just wanted to get everyone's comments out there.
I do have more comments, and I did have a call for a count outside.
No, I take it back.
A call for a count?
Never mind on the count, but yes, more comments.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The call for a count was rescinded, but we do have more comments on the overall article.
We'll take additional comments. Please, if people could please keep their comments to one minute or less and don't rehash what we've already heard. We only, we've had quite a bit of discussion. We just want to hear any new comments, please. Thank you.
Jacob Steinman, Bolton Woods Way. Hopefully, I'm not going to rehash anything here. I would say that there are people in this community that would not agree with the characterization of the gentleman's previous characterization of the purchase of the other property as a success. Part of the reason that my family came here, one of the benefits that many of the families here enjoy, is the conservation land, is the opportunity to be out in the wilderness and to expose our children to that. And a lot of those families don't have the opportunity to be here at this event tonight because they have children, because they have people that they have to care for. So on behalf of them, and on behalf of the people that are not able to be here tonight, aren't able to be represented, I'd like you all to consider them and their needs and vote for this purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
One more comment?
Anyone else?
Sure.
Kyle Fraser, 153 Wilder Road. I just wanted to comment, I originally come from Lincoln, Mass. I remember this debate back when I was a child, when Lincoln was preparing to conserve its forests and its wilderness. By doing so, they actually were able to improve everybody's home values by improving the quality of life in conservation. I do agree with the tax burden being quite a uncertain future uncertainty that we're all facing, but I do also think that this is a long-game consideration rather than a short-term real estate transaction in the greater sense of development. So by investing in conservation, you're actually investing in the future of the value of the town. And the tax that you do pay, you're actually getting a bigger return on your investment of your home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more, Doug?
All right, one more.
Okay, Al Ferry, Pinewood Road. Look, these opportunities come up, real estate comes up sometimes, and the idea that-- up sometimes. And the idea that this is not the right year to do it, this deal won't come up again. This is a good deal. If a town doesn't want it ever, they can sell it again. But now's the time to take advantage of this because it's available.
Okay. Thank you, Al. I'm now going to ask Brian Berube, who gave the original presentation, if he had any final comments or answers to any of those questions briefly. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry. I've given the mic to Brian. If you could hang on, I'll let you go after him. Thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to comment, and I think we've already made it with not tabling it as far as the public meetings go, that Stan was saying. This has been part of the Conservation's Public Meeting for almost a year now. It's advertised. It's online. It's on the website. You can get emails about it. Once COVID struck, we went online. We do Zoom meetings. And I want to thank all of the town citizens that did come out and say that this has been discussed for years. This is something that was not not discussed publicly, just came up. We didn't have the time. This has been discussed publicly. If we wait another year because we think people are going to come to every Conservation Commission meeting to learn about this, it's ridiculous. This has been going on for years. It's been advertised publicly for almost a year now. I thought it was very disingenuous.
Thank you. Okay, one more comment in the auditorium.
Benjamin Powderhill Road. I just want someone on the Select Board to explain the provision, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed, yada, yada, yada. So if...what does that actually mean?
One of the selectmen want to address that?
Borrowing. And this is wa...am I coming across to everybody? Okay. This vote requires a two-thirds majority because it is a borrowing. And it is a borrowing that will be exempt from the limitations of Proposition 2 and 1/2. That is what that line refers to, is that it will be, the town, and that is why it will be on the ballot next Monday, is because the town needs to not only approve this at a town meeting, but to also approve it in an election, that the town can borrow the money and exempt that money from the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Okay. So not only do we have to...so a positive vote here tonight would also require that there be a positive vote at the election next Monday. Okay? I believe that's good debate. Thank you very much. All right. So we're going to vote this Article 23, the Taggart property. It's a two-thirds majority. A in this case means you do want the town to buy the property. Okay? We need to get two-thirds in all three rooms, a clear two-thirds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
That passes by two-thirds in the auditorium.
Two-thirds in the passage in the gym.
John?
It looks like two-thirds out here.
Okay. That article has passed. Thank you. Article 24, Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control Project. Can we move the article?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. This requires a majority vote. And we do have a presentation on this by Scott Powell.
Yes. Good evening, Scott Powell. I'm chairman of the Mosquito Response Committee. This article really is not so much about mosquitoes. It's more about protecting public health from West Nile virus and eastern equine encephalitis, or EEE. EEE is way more deadly than COVID-19. If you're infected with EEE, you have a 60% chance of severe neurological damage and a 40% chance of death. Last year in Massachusetts, there were 12 people that were infected and four people died. And so the situation got so severe that last year the state resorted to aerial spraying, including parts of Bolton. Next slide, please. Keep going. One more slide. Slide 35. So at the end of last year, the Board of Selectmen appointed the Mosquito Response Committee. And as you can see, it's made up of a really broad perspective. It includes Parks and Recreation, Conservation, Board of Health, DPW, Public Safety, the Town Administrator. And we also had two citizen volunteers, Dr. Amy Clark, who's an equine veterinarian, and Jonathan Schwartz, who's an attorney. Next slide, please. As we, as the committee looked at the challenge, there were really three key considerations. One was to minimize the health risk to both people and animals. Secondly, to protect the environment. And third, to minimize the cost to Bolton taxpayers. Next slide, please. Our recommendations from the committee are that Bolton do a lot more surveillance of forward disease-carrying mosquitoes. So we need to know the nature of the problem and where the health risks are in Bolton. We also need to do a lot more proactive work to reduce mosquito breeding grounds throughout the town where possible. And if we do have a health risk, we need an effective response. We need professional advice regarding alternatives, help with timely communication to the public on the health risks. Next slide, please. So we looked at a lot of different alternatives. We talked to local farmers. We contacted the UMass Department of Epidemiology. And we also talked to a number of third-party companies. But the committee unanimously decided that the best course of action is for Bolton to join the state-sponsored Central Massachusetts Mosquito Project. This project has pretty extensive services of proactive nature in terms of testing and public education and helping us to reduce mosquito habitat. There's also a reactive program as well if we have significant health risks, as well as research and efficacy testing, which really tells us whether the, you know, these programs are working effectively. Next slide, please. So the committee reviewed our recommendations and the article with the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Advisory Committee. And all of those organizations support approval of this article. So none of that really means anything without your support and a favorable vote to pass this article. It's never been more important for us to be able to be outside and enjoy this beautiful town. And we need to do that as safely as possible. So hopefully, you'll approve this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have debate on Article 24? Yes, Mrs. Trup.
Doug, if I can have Jonathan Schwartz come up and handle the...
Sure. If you could just give her the mic, please.
Well, they spread po...sorry. They spread poison all over the place. It doesn't just kill mosquitoes. It kills fish and pollinators who are...
Can you get a little closer, please? Thank you.
Kills pollinators who are already in deep trouble. If you like strawberries, that's a problem for you. And we have screams. We have repellent. And some of us want to have organic gardens, which also virtually destroys.
Thank you. Is there other debate in the auditorium? Yes. Jonathan?
I'm just...
You're just going to answer it?
Get it close to the microphone and I'll aggregate all...
All right. So let's get all the debate out. Okay. Ken, do you have any debate in the gymnasium?
Looks as if no.
John, do you have anyone outside?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Rhonda Balco, Green Road. I have worked for the last 22 years with both the Fish and the Federal Fish and Wildlife People. And I am in favor of spraying if there is EEE around and it is specifically targeted. But when you spray all these other areas, and we have a lot of wetlands in town, you're destroying all kinds of critters and larvae and everything. Rachel Carson, 50 years ago, warned us about all these pesticides, and we're still not paying attention. I say, let's just do it for targeting, not for the entire town.
Thank you. Is there...I appreciate if everyone would hold the applause so we get all the speakers in. Is there another speaker, John?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jan Johnson, Green Road. The chemical industry is extremely powerful. Their products often come on the market with no testing, and our government is not protecting us. The EPA and the USDA have their hands tied. Pesticides are associated with cancer, birth defects, learning problems, and infertility. If you or your child become ill from pesticides, it's up to you to prove the connection if you wish to receive any compensation. And if you want to talk about death rates, let's compare the cancer rates in children to EEE. The cancer rates in children are way above that, what the death rates for EEE. I'd just like to mention that if you don't like mosquito bites, eat garlic and buy garlic sprays. I've been sitting in my chair here. I eat plenty of garlic. And the mosquitoes have been landing on me, walking around on my arm and saying, no thanks.
Thank you for that advice.
We have more commenters?
Okay.
Cindy Palastery from Quaker Lane. I just want to say that this could be one way to save the town money by not voting for this. On another note, if I understand this correctly, if we join, people will have their yard sprayed by trucks coming down the road. Like, we have wetlands behind our house going the whole way down Quaker. I would opt out of it, and my neighbor would also. So none of that wetlands would be, by our permission, allowed to be sprayed. And I don't even see how a truck driving down a road or even into our driveway would ever reach those areas. And I wouldn't want them to anyway. And lastly, Mass Audubon has stated that spraying, wait, that spraying has to be balanced against the risk. But mosquitoes breed so rapidly and in so many locations that many mosquito control practices have only local and temporary effects on the numbers of biting mosquitoes. And if I understand correctly, the spraying is done automatically every three or four weeks to keep up with the mosquito lifespan. Maybe somebody could answer if that is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to get some answers after everyone has spoken. John, do you have anyone else?
It looks like two more.
Okay. Please keep it to a minute and new discussion, please.
Hi, this is Al Ferry. I'm just wondering, is it possible to sign up for this without the spraying?
We'll ask that question.
Let me just comment. And if it...statistically, it doesn't make sense to spray. At best, you'd get 50% of the mosquitoes, which would reduce your chances of getting, you know, disease from two to one.
Okay, thank you. We're holding answers until everyone has spoken.
Hi, this is Andy Roberts from Andy Moore Road. I just wanted to comment. I think a lot of the conversation so far has been focused on just the spraying initiatives from the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. It is a year-long, you know, effort that they do that's, you know, looking at controlling breeding grounds for the mosquitoes as well. So draining ditches, looking for other standing water problems and things like that to reduce the overall mosquito population in the town. Spraying isn't their first, like, their first choice for dealing with mosquitoes. They're trying to deal with that larval population and trying to prevent so that we don't have things like the big aerial sprays that we saw last year.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, John?
That's all.
Okay. We're going to have Jonathan Schwartz answer a few questions here.
Thank you. I'm Jonathan Schwartz. I live on Randall Road. If I could ask Tim Juchamps to come in, because he's from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. And he'll have a couple of facts that perhaps I won't be able to fill in. I was taking very quick notes, although my handwriting is less than desirable. So if I omit your question, it means that I can't read what I was scribbling down. So I apologize. I think the headline questions or a lot of themes that I was picking up were, is spraying automatic? Can we join? One person asked, can we join without spraying and concerned about spraying? And really, what is the information surrounding the spraying? And so to back up from that question, which I will answer, the majority of the benefits, and if we can go to slide 38, it gives a little graph, the majority of the benefits of the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project are proactive in nature. Surveillance. Do we have a problem? We don't know right now in Bolton if we have a mosquito, a triple E, or a West Nile virus problem because we have no traps. We're just relying on what the headline news every night last summer was telling us. That doesn't inform the citizens of this town as to what our response as families as a community should be. And surveillance is number one. Number two is there is a variety of proactive measures. Then one of the speakers was talking about the temporary nature of spraying and the effects there, too. What is even better than spraying an adulticide is stopping a mosquito problem before it blooms. Okay? And how we propose to do that is through ditch maintenance. Standing water is where they breed. So get rid of the, either treat the ditches. Also have, restore pond, not ponds, but blocked waterways to their historical flow rates so that you limit the amount of standing water. Does that mean get rid of the wetlands? No. That means make sure that there is, where there was once a stream and there's now, you know, a bunch of standing water, make it so that the stream is visible and the water keeps moving. Because in the standing water is where you get the mosquito larva breeding. We can also treat with Larvicide, okay? And that's a special bacteria that is only unlocked in the pH of the mosquito, the arbor virus carrying mosquito's stomach. So it doesn't harm, fish doesn't harm anything else. And there's source reduction, the larva control, ditch maintenance. So it's a bunch of proactive measures. Now for spraying, I think it's a couple layers to the onion. Number one, we want to keep local control. And what do I mean by that? I mean, we want to keep property owners, have them opt out if... I mean, we want to keep property owners, have them opt out if there was to be spraying in neighborhoods, have your entire property opted out. The trucks that Tim's state agency uses are smart spraying trucks, GPS monitors with little weather stations on them to feed in what the wind pattern is so that they know automatically to stop the nozzle from spraying so that you, when they approach somebody...
Okay. We don't need that level of detail here. You're going on. You can opt out. That's a very...
Yeah, yeah, so a couple layers. Thank you, Ms. Monitor. So, being an attorney, I'm naturally verbose. So, number one, property owners can opt out. If you and your entire neighborhood don't want to spray, then it's a phone call or an email or whatever the process is, very simple, you opt out. Number two is, for town property, we, as the Mosquito Response Committee, think that the Board of Health should be in control and, of course, you can attend those public meetings, should be in control to give... To give... To accept, I should say, sorry, accept the professional advice, and then there will be a decision made as to whether there should be spraying or not, okay? So, again, we want to keep the control within the town, not cede to the state and have the aerial spraying to the extent that we can prove, you know what, we don't have a mosquito problem in this town because we have the surveillance to back that up. Let's see, so there's a question about fish-bearing waters. The state agency is subject to a NIPD's permit, it's a discharge permit. In their history, there's never been a violation. And what do we mean by a NIPD's permit? They cannot spray, their permit says they cannot spray within certain area of a fish-bearing water, okay? And so they're prohibited. They've never had a violation in the history of that organization.
Thank you. I think you answered many of the questions.
All right.
Does anyone feel that any of their questions were not answered? Bob?
Bob Zikansky, Norris Road, one of the selectmen. I'd like to recommend people vote for this article for the following reasons. One is, this is a one-year commitment that we're making. We don't like the job that they're doing, or we feel it was unnecessary, we just don't put it in next year's budget. The second is, Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control has been around for about 30 years. I went online looking for bad things that people said about them, and I couldn't find anything. And so while there's much concern about prospective or possible injury, there's nothing out there that I could find where other towns that have been doing this for years, people have been loudly complaining about it, and I think that's a tribute to mosquito control. The third is, I would like to point out that the governor has sent legislation to the legislature, proposing that aerial spraying over parts of Massachusetts that are not part of a mosquito-controlled district be increased. In that sense, turning this down gives us less control over what happens. My last statement would be, I have seen a proliferation in terms of private insect sprayers in Bolton. That's far more indiscriminate than anything that we're proposing here tonight, so I advise you to join this project.
Thank you, Bob. I think we're ready to vote. This is Article 24, Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. This is a majority vote. If you vote yes, you're voting to authorize the town to join this group. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? That passes by majority in the auditorium. Ken?
We should do a count in the gym, it looked very close.
Okay. We're going to do a count, we've got to do a count everywhere, right? All right. John, did you get... What was your call?
It seems like a majority out here in favor.
Okay. So Ken, we're going to wait and have you do your count.
Okay. So the ayes, ayes first?
Point of order. Well, I can see how close he is, and in fact, if he counts and he does have a majority, we don't even need to count the other rooms because we've already declared it in the other two rooms, okay? That's pretty logical. So Ken, let's count your room. There's many fewer people in that room than the other two. There are many fewer people in the gym right now. You guys are going to hear the count once we do it. We're going to count in the gym, we'll get that count, and I'll make a determination whether we need to count in the other two rooms.
We did move and second that article at the very beginning, and it was a majority vote. It was a clear majority in this room. John called in a majority outside as well. There are quite a few more people outside than in either of these rooms. So if we get a majority in the gymnasium, we've got a majority. I'm just saving us the time to have to count everybody. But if we do, we will.
Doug, we're 6-6.
6-6, okay, well, we have a majority. That passes. Thank you, Ken. All right. Thank you. I will accept a motion to authorize the town election. Moved and seconded. Any debate on authorizing the town election? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously in the auditorium.
Unanimous in the gym.
John?
Unanimous outside.
Okay. If I could please again ask everyone to just wait and let us disperse the crowds a little bit so we don't all pile on top of each other. We do need a motion to dissolve the meeting. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed? This meeting is dissolved. Thank you very much for your help and for your cooperation today. Appreciate it.